This time I'd like to call to order the December 12th, 2007 Planning Commission meeting. Let's record show that Ms. Paige Becknell and, uh, let's see, Mr. Steve Barrow and Mr. Scott Courtwright are absent. All of the commissioners are present. This time, we're going to, uh, swear in our new Planning Commission member, Ms. Beverly Barre. Mr. Parentley?
Do you swear or affirm to uphold the rules and regulations of the Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission? Would do both in one swear again.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll, uh, move along to the acceptance of minutes of the November 14th, 2007 meeting, and I see we have some revised pages. Charles, can you or Angie, uh, or y'all highlighted everything to show what the changes are? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the revised minutes?
I have a motion to approve the revised minutes by Sherri Slimon.
Second?
Seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, with the swearing in of Ms. Barre, we do have a core. We now have six.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
And moving along to item six, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions, 6A, the J. Clyde Savoy property, lots AB-2-A and AB-2-B.
Plant Quettmaw, Representative W.J. Quettmaw surveyors, asking for the J. Clyde Savoy family partition to be approved. We had, um, one comment, um, what was the method of sewer effluent removal from lot AB-2-B. I have, uh, Mr. Savoy and Michael Savoy present, um, to discuss where they would like to run that.
Comments or questions from commissioners? Now, if there are no comments or questions, commissioners, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Angie, let's record show Mr. Courtwright has entered the meeting.
My name is Dean Riley. If you look on your map, along the property, directly west of Mr. Savoy's property, I'm just here to let the commission know that I have no opposition to this request and urge the commission to request it, to, uh, approve the request. Thank you.
No one else to speak. Mr. Savoy, do you have any, any comments that you'd like to make to the commission at this time?
The only thing I'd like-
Could you speak into the microphone, please, sir?
The only thing I'd like to say is, uh, I have two sons, and the property eventually, I'm gonna leave to them. And I have one son living on one side of my house, and the other son's gonna be all behind me. And, uh, um, you know, we'd like to commission to approve this, uh, action for me.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Michael, does the 15-foot drainage servitude have to continue along the east property line?
Does it continue 15-foot?
No, I'm asking Mr. Engineer.
Question, does it have to continue?
Yes.
I'm not sure if they proposed it or we asked for it. Maybe Mr. Court might could answer that.
Okay, which, which particular servitude are we talking about again?
Saying on the east boundary.
The one on the east boundary. It stops at the, at the northernmost corner of the lot, and then you have a 12-foot utility servitude going north to Stranger Bridge Road. So, the question is, does that 15-foot drainage servitude have to continue?
It doesn't have to unless you want it to. It can, it can continue an overlap 12-foot utility servitude, if you'd like.
It's probably gonna drain back to the bayou, right? So, it really doesn't need to continue towards the road?
In that-
Is that correct?
Um, talked to the client about the hydrology of the lot. It naturally drains to the west to that 18-foot type of bank ditch. Parish maintained ditch.
But should it at least go up to that 10-foot swell ditch? Swale ditch? Should it at least go to the ditch then? I'm just-
Yeah, well, the, the road under the family partition requirement, um, I mean, I'd be happy to make that adjustment. Um, the, uh, the road construction requires two drainage ditches on, to be on both sides-
Both sides, correct.
So, therefore, um, any, any water, if such were drained, uh, from that property to, to that swell ditch, if it didn't drain to the west naturally.
Michael, what do you think?
It's very difficult for me to say without looking at topography and, you know, we don't really have enough information to judge where it can drain and where it, where it can't. I, I'm pretty much at the mercy of the surveyor to propose that.
Well, if you don't mind, let's just go ahead and connect it, just, just to be on safe side. How's that?
So, you wanna-
Just, we wanna extend it all the way up to that, to that 15-foot drainage servitude that traverses the property east to west.
Over the 12, and make it 12, 12?
Right over the 12, yes.
Okay.
Are you gonna go ahead and allow for a utility servitude and a drainage servitude also? They've got to have the utility servitude to get utilities back to the lot.
You're right.
I mean, I, I agree with you that the drainage servitude should be extended, that it should all tie in, but they've still got to have that, that 12-foot utility servitude.
Yeah, but it's gonna have a drainage, it's gonna have a swale inside the, uh, that 50-foot private access servitude as well, so, you know, to me, it's like, you know, it's already there, so.
You had a 15-foot drainage easement on the east side that went down to a 12-foot utility servitude, and it kinda caught my eye. We both talked about it, and, uh, it's kind of a shame there's not a cross-section of the road servitude there, because the surveyor's correct, he's got to have a continuous swale ditch on both sides of the roadway. Uh, in essence, if it drains to the west, there's no other water from the west gonna come on this property. There shouldn't be any problem at all with the way it's laid out now, 'cause we're gonna have two swell ditches on either side of the new, uh, private, 50-foot private access servitude, then the 15-foot ditch down on the side going back to the bayou, uh, plus the swale running through the middle of the property. I'm not saying there can be any drainage problem.
Okay.
That was Chris, uh, Chris's thoughts, too.
Alright, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Okay.
You said you have another son that you'll be giving property to in the future?
No, already did.
You already did?
Yes.
Okay, so you won't need any more lots? Okay.
Well, he'll, from what I'm understanding, you will eventually give both your sons the entire piece.
Right.
So, they will inherit, play on AB-1. He will acquire the piece south of him, the remaining property, it will be given to both sons, the entirety of the remaining property. But, to be fair, currently, he's only giving the point seven four five to, because he only gave the other son a certain amount, but at the time of this proceeding, those sons would acquire the remaining property in division 50/50.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. I don't believe there'll be any other lots created on the road, so I, I'm okay with that.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6B, J. Byron Fontenot property, tracks D-1 and D-2.
Again, we're here to ask for Planning Commission approval on the J. Byron Fontenot family partition, uh, track D into track D-1 and D-2. Mr. Fontenot is here, the owner, answering you. Non-technical questions you may have.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I had a question about the drainage across the back of the servitude, or the back of the lots. Is the, um, this, the drainage servitude, where does the drainage go?
The property naturally drains, uh, as a requirement of, of, of the rules and regulations require a 15-foot drainage servitude to be on the rear of all lots. The drainage naturally goes to Byron Fontenot Road, which has a parish maintained ditch alongside it.
It's on the other side of the road. I saw that. So, that's why I'm just kinda curious. I'm not, I, I did not drive up to the existing house, I just woke up to it, so I wasn't sure what happened behind there.
The property drains like this, and on the other side, it naturally drains like this, but away towards the north.
Towards the north.
And there's a, there's a ditch for track, track D-1, track D-2 is north of, of track D-2. The property slants towards that subdivision on the other side, and the parish road has a fairly, a big ditch on one side, but it has a, a swale ditch where that water runs down. There's another parish ditch that runs perpendicular to the road, that goes under the road with a culvert. All that water goes under the road to that big ditch, and goes to 431 under a big culvert, and goes out towards the swamp.
Okay, so, where the, you lost me a little bit on your norths and souths. So, where the drainage servitude is now, it can drain, there, there is somewhere for the drainage to go, right?
Right. He, I understand that he put the 15-foot drainage servitude in the back because it was a requirement of, of the plot.
But if it doesn't serve a purpose, there's no sense putting it there?
Only because it's required. I mean, I, I don't know a place to put it.
Um, Charles, let's add that to our subdivision agenda, to where we can look at rewording that, where it, if people, if developers or surveyors think it has to go on the back, let's look at that, okay? Let's add that to our agenda.
That servitude was, was there because we thought it was a requirement, but it, it's, there's no plans to make a ditch back there because everything drains forward.
Okay.
And reading the new drainage ordinance that the council just passed, I believe that language is in that ordinance as well.
That may, that may need to be revised.
Okay, we'll look at that. So, where would be the proper place on these two lots to put that drainage servitude, so it would be effective?
I think the drainage would be where the 12-foot utility servitude is actually, uh, because then that would drain straight towards, uh, Byron Fontenot Road, where that parish maintained ditches. It's a similar situation where, uh, the road being required to be built under the family partition rules will require two swell ditches on both sides of the road. Um, I don't know where, where you could put it. There's no main ditches on the property to drain anywhere, other than the natural slope on the property.
Okay, it's not my place to tell you where to put it. Would staff like to add anything?
Yeah, the drainage ordinance is subject to family partitions this small.
Can't hear you, Chris.
The drainage orders does not apply to a family, uh, family's partition this small, 'cause we're below the number of minimum lots it requires.
And this is something that we can grant a, um, a waiver of variance for?
No, I, actually, I thought the wording was, I've got my book, but I, I didn't think the wording, I thought there was an option. It doesn't have to be the rear, it could be a side. I thought there were, was an option.
Well, if there's gonna be swale ditches in the, the private servitude-
Right.
Then, why not go ahead and put the 15-foot drainage servitude, split it between the property line of track D-1 and D-2, and go up to the private servitude, where we go ahead and tie into that?
That'd work.
I mean, that would, uh-
You know, the other option is, uh, you, you don't really wanna share, uh, servitude with the 12-foot utility servitude, if you can help it.
Right.
Particularly in this case, and you're that close to the, to the southern boundary of the property, it wouldn't work worth a-
But in this case, you wouldn't necessarily be sharing that.
Right.
Because you, you should have two swale ditches.
Let's have the commission.
But let me confirm, that's something that we, as the commission, can waive, the requirement for that rear 15-foot servitude? It is, okay.
In fact, that's what the drainage board is hoping, that we quit placing servitudes where they don't go. I just had somebody here, over a matter like that. But we had a servitude that went to nowhere, and somebody dug a ditch, and then we had to get involved in it.
Well, that's, that was part of the discussion with subdivisions, the engineering, all the engineering that takes place, when it comes to us, the drainage servitudes that are on there should be what we absolutely have to have.
Right.
Uh, with family partitions and simple divisions of property, it's a little bit different, 'cause you're dealing with something on a smaller scale.
Y'all read the letter that I sent in, provision up, I'm trying to do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is my, this is my wife, and, uh, my daughters are medical people, and, uh, they're gonna each build a private home there, and my five acres is gonna stay long, like, like it's been since 79.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, I wanna open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak. Are there any, any other comments that you have for the commission?
Did, did you want to move it? Do you wanna move it?
Yeah, if, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna make a motion to, to approve the requested family partition with a waiver to the requirement for the rear 15-foot drainage servitude, and , uh, subject to, uh, including a, uh, seven-and-a-half-foot drainage servitude on the north line of track D-1 and on the south line of track D-2. Uh, from the west property line all the way to, uh, Stamis Road, the extension of Stamis Road.
To the, to the right-of-way line.
To the right-of-way line.
Private access servitude line.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas. Second? Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6C, the Jan Mark Abel property, lots H-6-A through H-6 through, dash E.
James Fauqua, representing Earls and Associates, on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. Is this Mr. Abel?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the addresses for the people that you're giving lots to are all out of this area. How old are the children you're giving lots to?
About seventeen, my, uh, almost fourteen, and the other two ladies, that's my mother and my mother-in-law.
Okay, and they're the ones that are in Oklahoma?
Uh, that, well, Oklahoma and in Connecticut, that's where.
Okay. Okay, and are, they're planning on coming back, so they can live on this property?
Passed today. I can't tell you what's gonna happen. I'll live for today. That's the intention, you know, to give them a place, should they decide, you know, a place for the family to kind of nestle together there at the end of the property. Hopefully, I'll be around to see you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
The property owner, you know, adjoining, uh, this property in question here, okay, uh...
Your name, sir? You, you're adjoining, which, there are several, which-
Okay, uh, I'm Samuel Flint.
Okay.
Uh, uh, lot 7A. Right, can, can you show me what, what we're talking about again?
This is Ennis Smith, our mover here, where the wood is, the deck here.
Yeah.
He's binding this up between his family kid, his kids and his mother. Your property's here, I want you just, you know, Mr. The general there's now.
Okay, so, how are we accessing this now?
They're gonna be coming to the end of the road this way. They're not using this driveway whatsoever, they're gonna be, they're own, have to create their own route.
That, that's fine, I, I don't have a problem with that.
But, Mr. Flint, you had comments or questions to-
Uh, yes, well, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this, you know?
Okay.
So, I, I had no idea how, how they were accessing these back lots, so, uh, it was showing me that they're gonna have their own, uh, roadway, and, so, it, it doesn't affect me, so, I have no opposition at all.
Alrighty.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay, no one else signed up to speak, so, uh, any other comments that you, uh, you have for the commission? Okay, any other comments, questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Did I miss the answer to the question that was posed by CSRS, the, what is the method of sewer effluent? James, did you see that?
Yeah, it's gonna, it's through discharge along the back of the lots, along that 15-foot servitude. That was sufficient enough for the, for the health.
Yeah.
Where does it go from there?
It'll probably go down, uh, you see a storm drain culvert? There's a underground culvert that the parish dug there, everything drains south. I think it's black bayou down, I'm not sure if that drains into the bayou, no. Ditch eventually leads to it.
Does the applicant own, uh, additional adjacent properties outside of HG, um, I'm sorry, H-6A through E?
No, through the Es.
E, I think he does own one more lot to there.
That's the H-5A?
Yes.
And how, how big is that lot?
Uh, I would say a hundred foot wide, by the depth of the property, 202. It's gotta be at least a hundred foot wide, at least, that's what the zoning requirement is, I believe.
Is that, is that new lot being created, or is that an existing lot?
It's existing. Everything from the east is existing.
Okay.
And that's where they're building all those houses, right? Is that one, is that one that's being built on now?
No.
That's, that's part of the, the east, that was, uh, that was my brother's, they had some lots over there.
Okay.
I've, I've got just one comment, you know, there is a lot of, uh, if I could, please, the, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, development along that road, and, and right now, there's no public water along that road, and I costed it out one time, and it's pretty expensive, that, 'cause they, they want the water folks to do it, you know? It's a lot of money, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of people that live on that road on both sides, you know, already, plus, you know, what's, what's coming down the pipe. Uh, any, any way of, uh, getting the parish to help out with that, to put in like an eight-inch or a six-inch main back there, or is that all up to the individuals?
Uh, it would be the individual and the water company.
Yeah. Yeah, what's gonna happen, you're gonna have a whole bunch of little wells back there, and at some point, you know, they're gonna suck and dry, you know? But that's my thoughts, you know?
Doesn't have to be that way, the individual could step up and pay for that.
Right.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Is there any type of variance being requested here?
Yes, sir.
It's a family partition, there's the usual variance, there's not enough frontage on a public road.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve, but I'm gonna ask that, you know, in the future, when you're gonna bring something like this, I think you need to show all of the property that's owned by the applicant on the plat, whether it's included or not. Uh, you know, that's, I think, very material-
But his name is located-
No, I understand that, but I think we need to include it, show it.
Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas?
Second.
Seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'm opposed.
I have one nay, Sherri Slimon.
I'm opposed.
Another nay.
I oppose.
Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Courtwright?
No.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Ms. Barre?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
So, Dumas?
Yes.
Barrow?
No.
No.
So, y'all went ahead and tied it up on me, huh?
Didn't, I didn't notice.
That my Christmas present? We wanted you to do something this year. Did I say that? Okay, chairman votes yes. And the motion passes. Item 6D, Carl Stafford Estates, lot KC-1 through KC-4.
I'm Ronnie Bennett, Darrell Bennett, engineer. Here with Mr. Coral Cox. Mr. Cox bought a piece of property in June of 99, which has, uh, which is behind two lots, and the only access was given back in 65, in 19, let's see, yeah, 65, a 12-foot access servitude to this property, which was already created before he bought it. Now, he's wanting to do a family partition and give his kids three lots, and hisself one. And they have a, a live oak tree with a 40, with a 48-foot branch radius. And they have a, a live oak tree with a forty, with a forty-eight-foot branch radius. Which in, which is required for a forty-foot servitude of access. And we're asking for a variance on that, uh, servitude going in from Black Bayou Road to his property through to the live oak tree.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Bennett, where's your drainage servitude?
Uh, we have one on the rear of these lots. Uh, it requires for fifteen, but he has an existing shop and it's thirteen feet from the property line to the shop. And we're also asking him to do a twelve-foot drainage on right there.
Sure.
All this drains to that Black Bayou.
Okay, so you would be asking for a waiver of the fifteen-foot requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and over on the, let's see, the east side, you've got a forty-foot private driveway and utility servitude. Those should be separated. Your utility servitude should be separate?
Well, the utility is actually on the property to the east. The power poles, the utilities that are coming down through there, they already exist.
On the east side?
Yeah.
And, and it goes all the way down the property line?
Yes, ma'am, it goes all the way down to KC three, Lot KC three.
Okay, I guess we should've had that shown on the map.
Yeah, I've got the power poles on there.
I'm sorry?
I have them on there.
Are they, are they any existing servitude that's documented and recorded?
Uh, the only one is a twelve-foot access servitude going back to this property.
So those property, those, those power poles may not be in a servitude?
Uh, they're not in the forty-foot.
No, but I mean, the adjoining property doesn't have a servitude recorded for it?
Not that I'm aware of. We couldn't find anything.
Um, Charles, shouldn't, I'm thinking for four lots, this should be a wider, um, access. Isn't it supposed to be fifty feet for forty lots? I mean, for four lots, excuse me. Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Mr. Bennett, if you and Mr. Cox will have a seat, we'll be, we'll be right back with you.
I'm Patrick Musarella, I'm the adjoining property owner in the front and just wanted to, uh, ask the commission, I, I have no problem with the, uh, wishing for the division of property, but I would like to also ask the same that they're asking for a waiver, uh, to allow the twelve-foot servitude on my property to remain a twelve-foot servitude. I have a very large live oak tree there, uh, as well as numerous other trees, bushes and a fence, uh, so would like to ask that, uh, the twelve-foot servitude be allowed to remain and not, uh, extended any.
Well, we, we can't do anything to affect your servitude.
Okay, just wanna-
Right?
Yeah, we can't, we can't.
Right. Okay.
Well, I was under the impression that with the forty-foot servitude for his property that that would need to extend out to the roadway as such.
He's asking for a, a waiver of that.
Okay.
So it would not affect you.
Okay, well, once again, I'm just supporting what he's asking.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
No one else signed up? Alright, Mr. Bennett, you and Mr. Cox, please come back up. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I've got a question about the existing concrete slab. Is that gonna stay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's another waiver.
That was put there before I even knew about having to have a servitude or anything. Uh, it was just a location that we chose on the property to put it and in the process of us purchasing our home and everything, this came up and had we known prior to that, I'm, I would've put the slab in a place to where it would've been more appropriate.
Is it-
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I drove back, I, I, I saw it there, is it, do you use it, is it?
Well, we, we have not done anything in anticipation of what happens tonight, um, you know, because we didn't, we didn't wanna go out and buy a hundred and thirty thousand dollar double wide and get it on there and then not have this approved and then not have our utilities or have to do something different. So, we've, we've kinda been in a, a two-year, four-year limbo with this situation, um, you know, and we're hoping that we can get, get this done tonight. We're doing it strictly because we don't want the bank to have a mortgage on all of the property, uh, it's all paid for and we just simply wanna have that one piece that has the shop with the house that'll be on it, uh, mortgage against the purchase of the house.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Uh, well, the only comment I gotta make is is that I, I have, I, I can understand the waiver for the access on the twelve, twelve-foot road through, uh, Mr. Musarella's property, but I have an issue with essentially approving something that's gonna right off the bat be a non-conformity. You know, and, and, and putting ourselves in a situation where we're gonna, we're gonna send you to the board of adjustment to get a variance on a setback for your double wide. Uh, I think we need to address those things.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I don't think there's enough information, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the utility servitude situation, I think you have to have one. I don't think we can rely on, there might be something on the next property. Uh, I'm uncomfortable with that. Do we-
Want us to add a twelve-foot along that east side? Means already included inside.
Or I'd be willing to defer it, let you get more information.
Yeah, I think, you know, you, I, I think the commission is correct, I mean, you, you said you can find something in the public record, but did you call Entergy and ask them if they had a servitude for it?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need to, you know, that's critical, those lots have to have access to utilities. I think the drainage needs to be addressed somehow, I, you know, um, you know, you, there's drainage inside those, inside your road and it needs to be, you know, and I think it needs to be extended into, you know, Lot KC four anyway. I think it has to go forty feet into, into, uh, Lot KC four anyway.
All the way through? All the way through?
No, just forty feet into it. Um, and then I think, you know, you know, your existing slab that, that you put in there, I think you need to be aware of the fact that even if we approve it, you're not gonna be able to get a building permit unless you get a, a waiver on a setback and you're gonna have a tough time proving hardship. So it's, it's gonna be a tough, tough waiver to get. So, you know, I, you know, I think, you know...
Can you put it in a language that I can understand because, uh, I'm not quite sure exactly what you're saying. What I'm asking is, or what I'm trying to, uh, say is that what I have is a thirty-four by ninety-foot slab that's already pre-existing and I'm not building a house, I'm putting a double-wide trailer on it.
You still need to get a permit and a double-wide trailer needs to meet the minimum required setbacks from the property line that you're creating.
But if I have, if I have a slab that's there already that can't be tore up and moved,
That doesn't matter.
What a variance is for, or?
Not necessarily. You meet setbacks today, you don't meet setbacks when you create this subdivision.
Well, and I think you're creating a problem with lots KC three and KC four. You've got that slab sticking out into your access and, you know, what are you gonna put back there? If you tried to put another mobile home back there, I, I think you've got a problem.
I, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to defer and, and give you an opportunity to do some research.
I wanna let legal counsel, uh-
Mr. Chairman, I mean, uh, we already ha, we have some issues here that need to be addressed and I don't know how you're gonna address them anyway. You have a slab, you have two encroachments already in the servitudes. Uh, you got an encroachment in the drainage servitude, you've already got an encroachment in a forty-foot rite of passage when you need a fifty-foot rite of passage. I don't know if you, I mean, if you, and, and I'm not, you know, it's your decision on what to make, but you have, you already have encroachments in the proposed servitudes and you don't have a, a utility servitude existing. I, I, I just wanna make y'all aware of that, that I don't know if they'll be, be able to get any kind of permits with those encroachments.
And, and I think logistically, trying to get a, a motor, a, a mobile home back there, you are really gonna, you got a power pole and a tree, you gotta miss coming off that road. I, I don't know if you can physically do that.
I've already measured it and it can be done.
With eighteen feet.
Oh, alright, that's, you don't-
Mr. Chair, I, I have a motion to defer, they can meet with Stafford, Carter and sort this out.
That's fine. Uh, I have a motion to defer by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item seven, public hearing for grant preliminary approval to the following subdivision, Commerce Point Business Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Murray McCullough with Benchmark Group, eleven three twenty-eight Pennywood Avenue, Baton Rouge, seven oh eight oh nine. Uh, we represent the developers of this particular project, uh, B and B Land Development Company, LLC, represented, represented here by Mr. Bobby Smith and Mr. Brent Cuvion. This property has twenty-three acres in size, it's a zoned business park. We're proposing twenty-two, uh, commercial, um, lots on, with one street end and a T-turnaround, extended to the north side of the property for future development on the north side, uh, connectivity. Uh, we've, uh, uh, received comments from the engineering review agent and from the planning staff and those comments have been addressed. We received a letter back from, um, the engineering review agency saying that all comments have been addressed, so what we were, what we're asking for tonight is preliminary approval of this twenty-two lot commercial development. It's located on the north side of LA thirty, about twelve hundred, uh, feet east of, I'm sorry, yeah, about twelve hundred feet east of, uh, LA seventy-three intersection. All the traffic study and drainage studies have been completed. We ask for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Does your T-turnaround meet the, um, standards?
Uh, yes.
Fire and safety standards? Staff, have you looked at the T-turnaround? No, and I was gonna ask about that? Okay.
The only comment I would make from a staff standpoint is the property immediately adjacent to it, L J G Land Company. My comment would be, should something develop back there where a road comes in close to this T-turnaround, those should be required to ma, to meet up.
And that's the purpose of it being there, is for connectivity and the eventuality to property in the north is development.
And Michael, looking at the comments to us, um, what improvements, or are there any improvements to be made at Highway thirty and LA seventy-three? Do you know of any?
Well, the study refers to the fact that, um, that DOTD has some improvements scheduled and they are counting on those improvements happening. That's why we're making the comment that they need to approach DOTD through, because they're within a quarter mile, uh, well, they're on a state route, so DOTD would have the right to impose their own traffic impact contribution.
Okay. And as far as the elevation of the Northwest Ponds Outfall Ditch?
We don't believe, uh, it's going to change the design, it's, uh, uh, we think it's something they can work out in their construction plans.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I got a question, Murray. Y'all went to a lot of trouble to plot your trees, are y'all leaving all those oak trees or?
Well, it's a commercial development.
I understand, and I didn't-
As many as possible.
I really didn't think they'd stay, but when y'all went to all this trouble, I, I'd ask.
It was not, for a few trees that were out there, it was not that difficult, but it is a commercial development, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Murray, what's the timing on that DOTD project that you're relying on?
Honestly, uh, Mr. Dumas, I don't know, I would have to, uh, refer to traffic engineer on that, I don't know, but I will say this, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have started some discussions with DOTD about this project, we, we've made some phone calls and had some preliminary meetings, so those are ongoing, nothing's been decided yet, but we're, those meetings are ongoing with DOTD about the, our driveway and, and other situations regarding this project.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Any other comments you got for us, Murray?
We just asked your approval and appreciate the opportunity, so, thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners? And what is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion-
A second.
I have a motion to approve by Sherry Sloman, second by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. All right, to make public hearing and consider the following simple divisions of property with a variance, the, uh, C eight A W W Howe Property Lots A dash three dash A dash two dash A through A dash three dash A dash two dash D.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, representing Mr. A, Ms. Egbert Blue. There was one comment, it has been addressed and we're asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from commission, commissioners?
Does the app, uh, applicant own any adjacent property?
I think A three A one at one time, but I, I think she sold it.
Ellen, the ditch at the end of Conifer Drive, that's on Lot A three A two A, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's a pretty good-sized ditch. What are, do you know what the plan is for that? I know your, your, your road is gonna go over that ditch.
Yeah, probably gonna put a culvert in.
A culvert?
Mm-hmm.
Would, um, I talked with staff about this a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
And we wondered about, um, requiring a hard surface over, over the drainage servitude to prevent any, to continue Conifer Road over-
Okay, I don't see a problem with that, just that little section.
Right, right, like fifteen feet, twenty feet, something like that.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? There are no comments or questions from commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? No one wishing to speak. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Everybody's good with the 40-foot servitude of passage rather than a 50-foot servitude of passage?
Well, if there's a requirement, it's supposed to be 50, then it should be 50.
If you're 50 feet, it's on the... If you're 50 feet, it's on the partition or if it's a subdivision, okay.
If there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, then what is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve with the, with conditions that the 20-foot on the, can't find my North arrow.
What's that?
On the east side of the property line at Conifer Drive be a hard service, surface, excuse me.
The west side.
Is that west?
Yeah.
Okay, on the west side of the property, be a hard surface over that drainage servitude, 20 feet, and...
DC.
Forty.
The 40-foot private servitude of passage be increased to 50-foot.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with condition by Sherri Slimon. Is there a second? And the motion dies for lack of a second.
Would you like to, would you like to amend your motion to include no further subdivision of this property?
I don't hardly see how you could do it, but I'm certainly open to that.
Okay. Given that, I'll second, if it's still alive.
I'll go out. Okay, it didn't die.
Okay, so we are amending the motion, correct?
You're the motion.
You want to include that as a condition of your motion?
Are you okay with it?
I don't think it's an issue, but I'm certainly willing to respect Steve's opinion.
They can subdivide.
Okay. Do you want me to rephrase it?
No, I, hopefully staff got all that.
Yeah, we got it figured out.
All right. Motion to approve with condition by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
8B, the Charles Gonzalez property lots F3, 3 through F6.
Ellen Jackson again with McLean and Associates, proposing this four-lot development. There was one comment, it has been addressed, asking for your approval.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Ellen, who owns tract E2A?
Let me look at my, oh, shit, I messed it up. The same person that owns E1A, but I'm gonna find the name in a second. It's Mr. Gonzalez, I know.
Okay, so it's a family member?
Not with, no.
Not with these?
No.
Okay. Okay, just so, you didn't give any adjacent property owners on this plat, and we're, we're definitely requiring those now, so in the future, please be sure and put them on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
That's the same question I've asked before. So any of the other lots, are they owned by Charles Gonzalez that are adjacent, like Lot 6, whatever's below F6 and F5 and F4, which is not...
That's the only lot they show us.
Okay.
Well, Charles Gonzalez is just the name of the property, he doesn't own it.
Okay.
But BRM, that's the only...
So the name of the property owner is BRM Property Management?
Mm-hmm. That is, that is the only piece that they own.
And your 40-foot servitude extends onto Mr. Chris Gonzalez's property?
That's existing. It's existing.
Okay, it's existing, okay.
And if you want that 50 feet, we'd have to get it off the underside of their property.
Your side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mike?
And you'd have to move the utility servitude.
Yes, I will.
Okay. No, I mean, if you want it to 50, you'd have to move the utility servitude.
Yes.
How does a property management company have family members?
This is a simple subdivision, not a family partition.
Yeah, but in the hardship, it says, subdivide so that each owner and one additional family member can have a home site.
Well, one of the owners wished for one of their family members to live there, too. It's not a family partition.
I realize that.
I mean, they can...
I don't know how this has a family-related hardship.
So from a practicality perspective, the real hardship is, is that you're gonna have the additional cost of moving the utilities.
Excuse me?
The real hardship is that in order to give to 50 feet, you would have to expand the additional dollars to relocate an existing utility servitude. That's the real hardship, from what I see here.
Well, the real hardship is just this lot, that it hasn't existed, you know, it's on existing servitude of passage anyway, that's the way it exists. So the utility servitude is, we're dedicating it now.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'll make a comment, just, I'm a little uncomfortable with this, because it's setting, it looks like there's gonna be four lots put on the other side of Wesley Evans Road Extension. We're just setting it up. I mean, not at this time, I understand that's not what you're asking for right now, but it just, I see it in the future, it's gonna be a little subdivision right there, eight lots, no sewer treatment plant, no hard-service road. And that's just a comment.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Ellen, do you have anything further to add?
No, I don't, but as far as the other side is concerned, I have no idea what their plan is going with that, because my clients do not own that.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question for O'Neil.
Yes.
O'Neil, can, if we approve this, could we make it with the stipulation that there be no further division of property on Wesley Evans Road Extension? Can we, can we say that on a road?
I don't think on this, not what you have, not in this particular situation.
Okay, thank you.
If it was one land, if it's one landowner, maybe, I don't, but it's owned by a corporation.
Okay.
But they've also got an existing 40-foot servitude going across it anyway.
I'm sorry?
They've already got an existing 40-foot servitude for Wesley Evans Road already there.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'd like to make a motion to deny based on not wanting to give a waiver of the required lot frontage on a public street.
Have a motion to deny by Steve Barrow. Seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9, public hearing to consider amending Section 31.107 of the subdivision regulations.
I'm sorry, were you waiting on me? This is an ordinance that came to us from Jackie Bowman, our chief engineer, requesting that we standardize the street signs in the parish. The public signs will be green, the private signs will be blue.
I think we need to state that, because this is the old draft, without the blue on, the piece I, the one I have, says it must be a color approved by the Department of Public Works.
You're right.
But they actually, they, we actually, they've decided since then that they go with blue.
Yeah, that it should, so we should, when we make the motion, make sure we substitute that in.
Okay. And we are just differentiating between the public and private roads through color.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
For your information, this particular, switching to this kind of sign, this size and this lettering, that's, I think the letters are two and a half inches larger than what we use now. That particular background material, coupled with that luminescent type on it, is much, much, much easier to see, particularly at night. Should be a big improvement.
Okay. Any comments or questions from commissioners? And if there are no other questions from commissioners, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
This council committee has got a first and second.
It's a recommendation from the committee.
So really, the motion is for us to advertise? I mean, to, no.
No, we're going, we're going to send, we're going to send a recommendation to approve or deny this draft, or revise draft, because I think we need to, to the parish council.
Okay, okay.
So that's what, that's the motion that...
Do I need to make the motion?
Well, I think Don, Don is already making, was in the process of making a motion. Just because the recommendation comes from the committee doesn't have a first and second already. If that was the case, there's a whole lot of stuff that would have... Okay, Don, you're making a motion to approve, and I wanna make sure the, a revised ordinance...
Read how the last sentence should read, is it, however, street signs by private streets may not be engineered green, but must be blue and approved by Department of Public Works. That way, we don't have somebody putting in signs that cost a fortune to replace.
Okay, so you want, you wanna strike out the word color, or the word a color, and have, just must be blue and approved?
I'll second it.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve this draft with the revisions of the ordinance by Don Grant, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 10, committee reports, 10A subdivision ordinance committee.
Okay, we had two items that we wanted to share with you. Number one is the subdivision disclosures on Channel 21. Ron is gonna be working with Ozzy. When the new packets, when the developers bring packets in, then planning and zoning will put them, give them to Ozzy, and they will be put, our plan is to have them put on TV where people who watch the Channel 21 can see the plats on their TV. We're still working on these details, but we are working on that. And the other thing, you should have all received checklist in your email recently. Chris revised the checklist, the subdivision, the family partition and the, family partition and simple divisions.
Simple divisions.
So that the checklist matches the new drainage ordinance. And those were distributed also to developers, surveyors. And then our next meeting, we are having a meeting January 7th at 1 o'clock at DPW, and that is actually our December meeting, we're gonna hold in January. And then we also are gonna have our January meeting, 1/28, which is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Strategic planning. Did you go, Mr. Sigler?
We didn't have strategic planning this month.
He didn't have it?
No.
Is that your report, it was canceled?
Well, there's nothing to report.
But it was canceled, though.
There were no, there was no activity.
Okay. All right, moving along, item 11 was new, is new business. 11A was going to be a discussion by Mr. Dwight Fox, but I think that's been canceled?
Yes.
That's back in, I think that's been rescheduled for March, hadn't it?
Charles, what day is Mr. Fox, wants to come back in March?
March, yeah. I did, I did have an item I wanted to bring up under new business that doesn't require any action on the part of the commission, but I did ask Boxcar to be here tonight to just talk to us a little bit with the inspections that he's performing on these subdivisions.
On cue.
You sat there all through the meeting, and when I steer turned, then you decided you was up.
He was hungry.
Fox, I just want you to have an opportunity to, we just, we just see the reports that are emailed to us. We don't ever get a chance to really talk to you about it too much, as far as if there's any, any problems that you're having, or if there's any issues that keep reoccurring with some of these inspections, and I want to give you that opportunity at this meeting to go ahead and at least share some information with the commissioners.
Mike, we don't have no problems at this time, we're addressing them.
Okay. So everything is being taken care of?
Yes, sir.
As needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Old business, item 12, old business, 12A, the Cleveland J. Babin property lots 1-B-1 and 1-B-2.
Surveyors, ask for planning commission approval on the subdivision, family partition, Lot 1B. Adjustments have been made to the plat recommendations of one of the planning commission members. We're asking for approval.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? Public hearing, since it was deferred, the public hearing wasn't closed, and I will allow, if there is anyone here that wants to address the commission on this property, please come up and sign in with the secretary, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. Okay, no one here to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 12B, Charles Abear Senior Property Lots 4-B-1-A through 4-B-1-G.
There's been one main adjustment to the plat from last month. It's come to our attention of a recorded servitude along Babin Canal, so 65-foot on each side of the canal, totaling 130-foot, and along with the file number associated with that drainage servitude, signed along Babin Canal, which was not on the first plat.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I've got a question about, do you, are you going to build a bridge? Do you have a bridge?
There is a bridge, there is an existing roadway, crushed concrete roadway is already in place. The parish has inserted, covered over the, in the ditch, so that's all taken care of.
Okay, I saw the road, I couldn't figure out how to get there, but I did see the road, and that's why I couldn't see the road. But I did see the road, and that's why I couldn't see the bridge, I couldn't tell...
I wish you would have knocked on the door while you were there.
Well, I drove around.
You turn, there's a circle driveway, you turn on the, the west side of the circle driveway, and you go along the shop, and then go, it kinda makes a little S-like, and it goes on to the back. In the future, if you look at the plat, that, that servitude access of right-of-way goes straight. At one point, we're gonna move that trailer and, and the existing servitude will be straight. Present time, we're gonna use it like it is because it's all family.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Once again, this was denied, the public hearing was not closed. If there is anyone here that would like to address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary. What?
But it was deferred, not...
I said denied? Okay, well, it was deferred. I was just looking at something else. But it was deferred. Anyway, if there's anyone that wishes to address the commission on this piece of property, sign in with the secretary and we'll get you three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Just, I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
I was gonna say, on the rear part of these properties, we don't have a drainage.
Can I address that? I'll address that for you, if you would. Mr. Abear met with us, myself, Chris Ewing, our engineer, and with Charles back now on a couple of occasions after the last meeting, figuring out a way to handle all the objections we had last, he had last time, in a way that we felt would serve the public and his interests. And in doing so, there was basically no need to have the fifteen-foot servitude that was originally on the, along the east boundary of this property because that's not the way the water drains to begin with. So that was moved to the center line of the other two of the, well, basically running along the seventy-two-foot private servitude, because that's the way the water wants to drain, and then back to the canal. Basically, that's what the, our engineer thought would do fine with the swells for the seventy-two-foot private servitude and the more than adequate capacity of Babin Canal, I feel like that's all they needed.
Just, just a point of clarification, Mr. Seigler, the seventy-two-foot private servitude includes a twelve-foot utility, uh, utility servitude?
Yes, it does.
That's true. But if you look also up above, you've got a typical road construction section.
Right.
That shows you what the road's typically gonna look like, and that would, does not include the utility servitude.
Should you not label them separately as sixty and then the twelve separately, just to be clear?
The only problem with that, and doing the original design, is if, if we put, if we made it sixty along the twelve, it wouldn't reach the lots. So...
That's right.
Knowing that the regulation was sixty, we made it seventy-two to include them all.
To reach the lots.
All right, just to be perfectly clear, do we need to grant a waiver so you can put the utility servitude in the servitude of passage?
Well, technically...
If you did, you would have to grant it on every family partition due to the fact that the servitude, a twelve-foot utility servitude is required along all parish and state highways, and in order to come off of those, you have to cross twelve-foot utility servitude on every family partition or simple partition.
Mr. Seigler?
I'm thinking.
It's already a twelve-foot utility servitude on this plat.
Yeah, it shows a twelve-foot, yeah, he's got seventy-two-foot private servitude of passage, uh, but it... What you've essentially got is a sixty-foot servitude plus the twelve-foot on the sides, make it seventy-two. But it's labeled, so they're overlapping.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and in the event, a waiver should be deemed to be required with a waiver to allow the twelve-foot utility servitude to be within the seventy-two-foot servitude of passage.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item twelve C, request from Mr. Peter Meyer to reconsider a family partition of his property which was denied by the Planning Commission on November fourteenth, two thousand and seven. What you have in front of you is the newly adopted, adopted, um, appeals, application, and a revised plat.
What you're looking at is essentially a new plat. There has been some major revisions to the plat from last month. In this plat, a entire lot has been removed, so we are one less lot. In addition, the double M extension, the fifty-foot right-of-way private servitude is, is deemed to be total right-of-way, a non-lot, and that is point three eight six acres. In addition to that, a United Gas Pipeline is shown as well, running on the back track X-one.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Just a clarification, when we deny it, what, what is the appeal process?
Tonight, all we will be, uh, voting on is whether or not to rehear this, to let, allow us to come back.
On another date?
On another, it would be next month's meeting.
Okay.
That's all we'll be voting on tonight. If you feel like there's enough information here to warrant a rehearing on this, uh, this family partition. Comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Well, the, the reason for the appeal here given is, is a clear explanation was not given for the denial, and I, I just wanna reemphasize that the two, two reasons for the denial, as I understood it, was that track X-one was part of the property, and, and really, there, at the time, there wasn't a, a two-code method of ingress and egress to it. And I think you've, you've amended the proposal to include that, so I would be amenable to, to rehear it.
I have a motion to approve rehearing at the January commission meeting by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Julio Dumas, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition, discussion? Motion passes, and we are adjourned. We will reconvene as the joint sessions of the Planning and Zoning Commissions in ten minutes.